All right, guys, so let's see if we can crank through a lot of stuff today. My goal is to, if we can get a lot of things off this list, which would be a huge accomplishment. So, um, first of all, the two key things I think we need in front of us today are the agenda and the document that said, policy, meeting notes or something, what did it say, what's it called?
Policy Subcommittee Meeting Notes.
Yeah, yeah, those are the two key things we're gonna reference, I think, today. Right? So let's start with IHBHE. So Kristi, I found this in the September, I mean, summer 2020 folder, and it said it was from May. I don't even remember seeing this, so I read it. It looks all current and still relevant and still something we should be adopting. The, the E document, I assume, is an exhibit that's meant for the district, not for a school committee. Does that sound right?
That is usually how they're denoted, the Es are exhibits.
Yeah. So I read this over, and it seems pretty straightforward, and it looks like everything we're doing right now. Did anybody, did you have a chance to read this, and do you have any comments or questions about it?
I read both documents, and, you know, to echo your words, it's very straightforward. Just a quick question, exhibits aren't included in the policy manual, are they?
Correct.
Then I'm good.
Okay. How about you, Jeff? Did you look at this?
No, I did.
It seemed great. It's good?
Yep.
Okay, all right, good. Let's, let's send the IHBHE forward as is and not the, not the exhibit document. That's for your, your notebook somewhere in the office, Jeff, of exhibits, right? Okay, all right, good, yay, one done.
All right.
All right, now, next, I've put in, I've, I'm proposing some revisions to the face coverings policy that went before the board for first read at the last meeting. And the reason for that consideration is because there was a lot of flurry on the MASC listserv around masks or, around mask policies between then and now. And so I, I took a look at some of those, and I looked at some of the references people were citing, and I thought perhaps we could, I had some questions about our policy, but I also thought we could maybe make it more clear. So, um, this is EBCFA revised or version two that was in the drive. So let me tell you what I was thinking on this. First, I made three sections, one describing the face covering policy, then the exemptions, and then the violations. Those seem to be the three topics we were discussing in this policy. In the listserv, people were defining what kinds of masks were acceptable and not acceptable, and I think they were trying to anticipate particularly maybe some challenges from teenagers or something in the high school who might, you know, push the boundaries of what's an acceptable mask to wear, neck gaiters or things like that. And so they were defining them, and there's, we can either just go ahead and include this bulleted text here under face coverings, or we can refer to a district procedures document. But I kind of felt like, well, let's just put it in here and make it explicit without getting overly, overly detailed. Somebody reading this should be able to walk away and say, okay, I know what I can wear to school. And these were, these recommendations were taken from the guidance already cited. Plus, there were a couple of other references. This, this was drawn specifically, I think I took this from the Act in Public Schools, um, guidance, uh, policy. And they cited, I added these references to the end of the list, John Hopkins, FAQs, AAS, and I guess it was just those two plus the regular ones listed above. Because I was interested in where does it mention neck gaiters or bandanas? And it was mentioned in the American Association for the Advancement of Science article. So I, so I added that, just to be, try to make this very clear. And then, and then you'll notice that I put in red down below, under exemptions, individuals may be excused, and then it says a written, excused from the face covering requirement. And then further down, it says a written note from a physician is required for requested exemption. And then it says, exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. And when I first read that, I thought, are these all the same? Are these different levels of exemption? You can be excused from the requirement, there's an exemption, and then there's an exception. And I kind of felt like they were, that was maybe a little bit confusing. So I just highlighted that because I want us to make sure we're clear. And also, if exceptions are made, is this, you think, the best route to be approved by the building principal in consultation of the school nurse, local board of health? So Karen, nobody in central office is on that list. That kind of worried me. It kind of felt like we need to have somebody in central office as a point person so they can make sure exemptions or exceptions are consistent, have a consistent rationale, and are documented centrally. So, so those are the changes I, oh, and also I added, under face coverings, we have must be worn by all individuals in the school buildings. But I added over the age of two because I think the CDC guidance said over the age of two. And I, and I started thinking, oh, yeah, I guess a parent could be like coming to the school for some reason and have an infant in the family in their arms. And our policy would say that that infant or toddler has to wear a mask, but the guidance out there says under two shouldn't have to wear a mask. So I put that in as a point of conversation, too. So that was my thinking there. The only other piece here that I didn't, that I noticed this morning is the last part of the first paragraph says the following requirements are in place until further notice. And that's just fuzzy, and I wonder if we should say until the governor, you know, declares the state of emergency has ended, or until the superintendent announces other plans or something there that's more definitive until further notice. I can see this policy getting kind of lost in the policy manual and not being ended so properly. So, okay, so open up for discussion. Let's, let's talk about the first, let's go in order in the document, I guess. So what do you think about this? The following requirements are in place until further notice. Is that, is there something more clear we can put there?
Yeah, yeah, I get, I don't know, I sort of, I'm a little concerned about that, too, because until further notice, there's a lot of things that don't, they go without that, and so then,
Right.
You know, it probably should be something that has to do with, like you just referred to, once the governor does something, but I'm not sure what that would be.
We have it in the EBC supplement, I think, just looking to see what the language was. Hang on, Kristi may find it faster than me.
Yeah, I think it's important to have the language consistent.
Where was that?
Shall expire upon the end of the emergency as declared by the governor?
Yeah, are you reading that from something?
I am, from your notes.
From my notes? Well, look at that. I must have given it some pre-thought.
Well, it's in your EBC supplemental notes. So it says, it's under the, it's at the bottom of page two, and the language that's used is, the suspension of such policy will expire upon the end of the emergency as declared by the governor.
Yeah, I, I think, I guess the only downside to that is I was thinking about whether, would there ever be a circumstance where Jeff might declare face coverings for anything other than what the governor might declare? Like, would there be, could there be something local? So the governor doesn't declare the end of the emergency, but for some reason we feel we can, or vice versa, where we might be operating independently from the state, or have a need independent from the state? It's the only question I have. I don't really know. I, I think.
That's a good question, actually.
Would there ever be a certain?
Are you suggesting that it, that it sort of wants to, once the governor declares the emergency over, that this, this doesn't really go away as much as it just hibernates?
Yeah, I mean, it's possible the governor might say the emergency's over, and you, for local reasons, might feel like, you know, we need to keep wearing these masks for a little longer.
Yeah.
Example. So I'm wondering if we might say that language that you had, Cliff, but be able to add on? Or?
Or leave it, because it is flexible the way it is.
It is? Read it one more time.
The way, the way you, it's written now, until further notice, or whatever that language was, that's really very open-ended.
So read it, would you read it one more time? I don't have, I can't find the language.
Okay, so the language I'm citing is from your notes, and it's, suspension of policy shall expire upon the end of the emergency as declared by the governor. So what, the benefit of doing that is it thrusts the burden onto the governor.
Yeah, it does, and, and it also is consistent across all these other policies. Maybe we should just go for that, Jeff, and if for some reason there's a circumstance that you think it needs to be extended, then I'm, then I think you extend it.
Well, I think Jeff could, you know, just extend it and then notify the school committee he's extending it.
Yeah, I think so, too. Okay, so Kristi, do you have that language?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, so that's the first replacement there. Okay, now, a second question is, do you think this reorganization into three sections, face coverings, exemptions, and violations, is helpful?
I think that's a question Jeff needs to answer.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it like that.
Okay, all right, and what do you think about including these types of masks that are acceptable and types of masks that are not acceptable?
You know, I was looking for a copy of my reentry plan because I thought I saw, I think that's in there someplace. Either that or I saw it, just had a meeting about it, that they, I know the nurses had discussed it, that they should be, that they should be at least two ply. I, I think the standard was if you could hold them up and you could see through them that they, they're not.
Right, so that's what I said here, at least two layers of cotton fabric, not knit material.
Yeah. Like I said, I think they addressed that, so, well, that will work then, I guess.
You know, I mean, I've heard that standard quoted all over, you know, social media and the airways, the two layers, that, that seems to be.
The norm out there.
Yeah, it seems the norm.
Yeah, and then this, are you okay with the ones not acceptable? Masks with one-way or exhalation vents, neck gaiters or bandanas, plastic face shields without a, without a fabric or surgical mask?
Yeah.
Okay.
That also seems like popular knowledge if you're paying attention to what, you know, you're hearing.
Although there are people who are trying, you know, walking around with neck gaiters and bandanas, so.
Although, N95 masks have an, an exhalation vent.
Is that what, is that what they're calling it? That, that's what that's called, an exhalation?
It's a little, I use them in my shop, they, so you can breathe out so your glasses don't get fogged, but they're very good, and those, those are recommended. We have some KN95s which don't have that, but we did order some, we did order a number of N95s also because they're recommended, so we might want to.
I don't know if those are the same.
Well, that's what an exhalation vent is, as far as I know. Do you think it's something else?
My, I, yeah, it might be something else, because my understanding is that exhalation vents are not recommended because it lets your breath out, basically.
Yeah, but I.
But N95, I think, is protecting something else.
So Susan, where did you find that language about?
I looked at the, those resources at the end, John Hopkins, I think it may have come from CDC, too, I'm not sure. And it may have been in this Advancement of Sciences article, I can't remember now. But I did, I did look for that, and, because I didn't know really what they meant by that. And they described it as one way lets you breathe out, out of the mask. And I think the N95 has some kind of maybe filter or something that's a different, it's a, I think it's different. So let me, let me just double-check that. And I can, I can let Kristi know, and we can put the correct language in there either way, maybe after this meeting. Would that be all right with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I just think that it's important that the policy stipulates that you need to have a proper mask.
Yeah.
Not any old mask will do.
Right, but we have to then say what that means, right? All right, so I'll check on that item.
I can't remember, I apologize if you've said this. Is there any language in there about wearing, not only just wearing the mask, but how you wear it, that the nose and mouth are both covered?
Yes, at the face coverings, a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Because how many people do you see out in the world, and they're not covering their nose?
Right, it's true, yep. What do you think about this over the age of two?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, yeah.
All right, now let's look at this language of exemptions, being excused, being.
Can I just go back, because I was just looking at the images here. There, so some N95 masks have the, have the vent, but others do not, so. So certain ones, I don't know if you can see that right there, you see that, there's a vent?
Yeah.
That's a vent, okay.
That's one with a vent, and then there's, that one's an N95, too, it doesn't have a vent.
That's the kind I'm familiar with, the ones without.
So.
What did you order, Jeff? You said you ordered a bunch.
I don't know what they ordered, I just, I didn't know there were two different types, because I always use one with a vent, so when he said N95s, I'm like, oh, I know what those are. It was the first time I heard that there were different kinds. I can find it.
Yeah, um, maybe we should be checking with the nurse on this or something, because we need to get this right.
Are there border health regulations in terms of masks that the two towns use?
I don't know if that's been developed.
Like, I'm just wondering what the towns are telling their employees.
Yeah. I will see if I can find that out. Okay, I'll, I'll continue to look at that. That's good to know, Jeff, there are two types. I didn't realize that either. All right, so the third thing here, or last thing, I think, is this, these exemptions, being excused, being exempted, and having an exception, are these the same thing? Or are these different? So the first one says, individuals may be excused for the following reasons. You have trouble breathing, you're unconscious, you're incapacitated, you can't remove the mask or face covering without assistance, and that you need a doctor's note to be excused.
Yeah.
To be exempted.
To be exempted, sure, because in the first case, you're dealing with an emergency. Someone's having a panic attack or something, which allows them to be, you know, excused for removing the mask. But the second one, the exemption, is more of a medical reason? No?
Well, it says a written note is required for a requested exemption. So the exemption and the excuse, being excused, seem to be this, in the same category here. You have trouble breathing, you're unconscious and incapacitated. Then it says, exceptionally, additionally, coverings are not required during mask breaks, et cetera, outside. Exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances, and then it repeats, such as students with medical behavioral or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, must be approved by the building principal. So it, this is the part where I felt like, well, does this mean they have to get a doctor's note and approval by the building principal? Or is this something, is this a different category?
Who put that, the, who put that in, Susan? Did you put that in, or was that?
I think it came from MASC.
Yeah.
I still, I still think they're making a distinction between, like, a permanent, a permanent thing is exemption, and exception is situational.
Okay. Yeah, so let's put that word in, situational exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances. That's what they mean by certain, okay, circumstances. That's what they mean there, okay, never mind. It is probably under certain circumstances. But then it says, such as for students with medical behavioral or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, and that's a permanent thing.
Yeah, that would be.
It's confusing to have that there with the exceptions language. Because your exceptions may be for anybody, right?
Yeah.
So I, I'm wondering if maybe we could take out that reference to such as for students with medical behavioral or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, and just say, exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances must be approved by the, or maybe special circumstances, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with. And now I think this is the other piece, in consultation with whom? Because it seems like somebody in central office should be in the loop here.
Do we have a chief school nurse, someone who oversees all the nurses, or is it Karen who does that?
Karen does it. Karen.
That's who they need to talk to.
Yeah, with PPS?
Yeah.
What do you think, Jeff? In consultation, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with PPS. We did say that in some other policy in this emergency.
Well, they're most likely going to let it know anyway. Yeah, I guess we could put it in.
So should we take out in consultation with the school nurse, or say, keep that in there?
Well, new school nurse should be in there.
Okay, so must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse and
and.
Director of pupil personnel.
Yeah, that's fine. I would take out the local board of health.
Yeah. Okay, Kristi, do you think you have that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and then I, the added references at the bottom. So are we comfortable with this policy to bring it back to the, once I, I get more information about the N95 piece and the exhalation vents? Are we comfortable bringing this back for another visit to my school committee on this next meeting?
I am, but I'm interested to hear Jeff's response.
No, I'm fine with it.
Now, do we need to put this out as another first read? Or can we explain changes and ask for a vote?
I believe it's, it's, well, you, it can be two votes. The chair can call for a formal revision to the policy as previously presented. I don't want to tell the chair what to do, but if I were still the chair, that's what I would do. I would get a motion to make the changes to the policy as previously presented. Committee members would vote on those changes, and then there would be a vote to approve the policy in total.
Okay.
But I'm gonna tell you the chair what to do.
Yeah.
I'm not the parliamentarian.
Okay, I can speak to Jim about that. All right, so checks, done. Thank you for looking at that again. Okay, old business, ACAB harassment policy, so the only thing we have to do there, one of the confusions I had at the last meeting was that I had in front of me the ACAB version that MASC had sent, and the one we had in our folder that the committee was voting on was, was given to us by Russ, and it was approved by his office, so they look different. And so people kept saying, oh, there are these blanks to fill in, and I'm like, I don't see any blanks, and that, that's why. So it looks to me like ACAB just needs to have names and roles inserted into section three. And then I wrote to Karen to ask her, how does this affect policies JBA, which is a policy against harassment and discrimination for students, and JICFB, which is bullying prevention? And she said, as far as I can tell, we continue to need both policies. JBA is a harassment and discrimination policy. It's based only on the 13 protected classes, race, color, religious creed, et cetera, as well as sexual harassment. JICFB is a more general bullying prevention policy that is not specific to the protected classes or sexual harassment, but can be any kind of repeated bullying toward anyone in the school community. My opinion is that you continue to need both policies with updates to the harassment policy as suggested by Russ. She says, since I'm not a lawyer, and you may want to run my answer by Russ for guidance as well, but I think her response makes sense. So I would suggest that we, again, insert the information into section three. We'll do the, you know, suggest the same thing to Jim to vote the changes, and then, I wrote to approve the changes, and then vote to approve the policy.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the correct parliamentary approach.
Okay, does that sound okay with you, Jeff?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to bypass this technology one for a minute. We'll come back to that later. That's not, as pressing, I asked for feedback from Carol, Karen, and Paul about whether there need to be updates to these tech policies given remote learning, and the, mostly what they suggested were very minor things. So let's just put that on hold for a minute, and go down to section five, and the remain, remaining policies in this COVID emergency policy. So this is where we're going to refer to the materials document. So, um, this, if you turn to page two of this document, two, two.
Are you on policy EC?
EBC supplemental. No, no, I'm on the document that says, policy subcommittee materials 090820. It's at the top of the shared drive list, I think, materials, has an asterisk in front of it. Do you see that?
I have a hard copy here. What's it called again?
It's, it's a document, a Word document. It starts with an asterisk and says, policy subcommittee materials 090820. In the shared drive. Do you have that in front of you, the drive?
Jeff, it's that seven-page document that I gave you, that I printed out as our policy subcommittee notes.
Oh, okay.
That's the document.
Thank you, Kristi. All right, so what I did here is I took the full EBC supplemental policy that, that we're proposing so far. And everything that's in light gray is already, has already been presented to school committee as a first read. So I put it in light gray because we don't need to talk about those parts, for the most part, because it's already presented. We're going to focus mostly on the black text, which is what's left for us to continue to resolve. So, um, I think what's important here is that they, and I was, I had written this to Kristi last night. I think when this goes forward to school committee next, they shouldn't be looking at each individual policy that's cited here with red text at the bottom, because we're not making changes. Because we're not making changes to any of those policies. All we're doing is trying to approve this EBC supplemental and these six pages here are the, is the full EBC supplemental policy. So all these references to the specific policies within this. Are not changes to the policy per se. They are inserted because they want to make sure the superintendent has the authority to be nimble during this pandemic. And to get decisions made in response to changing circumstances with the pandemic. And so all, that's why I had originally written that, that, that grid. That's the last page of this document that indicates who has the authority. For different policies here to make changes to different policies during the pandemic. So if you. If you scroll to the last, last page in this document, you'll see that grid. Again. Everybody have that?
In a really small font.
Yeah, it's small.
I noticed that right away.
Can you read it? Can you actually read it?
Yes, I can. I, I. If it's the worst, I'm gonna jump up running the house with my magnifying lens.
Yeah, yeah. And Jeff, do you have this document?
I do. I don't see the grid though.
The grid should be page seven. Do you have?
I have a copy. I'll bring it right in.
Or Christie, I can put it on the screen if you want me to share the screen. Okay, cause I'm, I'm gonna make three changes to that grid. I've made them on the drive, but I, I didn't want to send another document over line. So I'm going to give you three places. I want you to just mark for our conversation. Soon as Jeff has the document.
I got it.
Okay, all right, so, um. If you go down to. Policy ICICA, school year, school calendar.
Yeah.
That should not be gray underneath your superintendent may, may create or provide change to spend. That shouldn't, put an X on that. That should not be there. The gray one should be the superintendent may propose, recommend to school committee for approval. That, that's where it's supposed to be gray. Okay. You with me?
Yeah.
Okay, and then go down to where it says JE attendance.
Yeah.
And you'll see that I've got a conflict here. I've got one that says superintendent can create, change, modify. And then one that says the superintendent may propose to the school committee. Put an X on the school committee gray box. That's not correct. The superintendent has the authority here.
Wow, Jeff, you've just picked up some authority. That's awesome.
While you can. And then the third.
I don't really need any more plus.
And then the third one is underneath that JH, student absences. And excuses says the superintendent, it says the superintendent can make the changes. That's not correct. Put an X on that. And it's supposed to be can make changes with the school committee approval. So. What's important in all these changes in this doc, in this EBC supplement? Is making very clear what the superintendent can do to get things done in a nimble fashion during this pandemic. So glancing down this, this chart lets you see the areas where the superintendent can just go at it and make changes as needed. And one instance, they have to inform the school committee, but I'm assuming the superintendent will inform the school committee. Anyway, of many of these things. And then there are a number that the superintendent may propose to the school committee for approval. And then the other columns have to do with making sure the superintendent's attending to collective bargaining and state law and DESI and so on. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so now if we go back to the document. Page two, it's already.
I have a question on the chart.
Oh, yes.
For policy JRA. Um, there's nothing indicated.
That's right. That's because there are, there is no authority in that. All they've done is restated that the district will protect students' privacy.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so if we go back to the document, page two is before the committee already. And so the first thing we come to is file ECECA. Now, this is one that the superintendent has authority. These, these are both policies where the superintendent has authority. So it says, subject to the provisions of law, regulation, collective bargaining agreements. The superintendent may suspend or amend current policy to ensure the efficient operation of business functions. And maintenance of school buildings and other such offices as the district maintains. So this makes no changes to EC or ECA. It just says the superintendent can go ahead and make changes during the pandemic as needed. Okay?
Yeah, so it's just a matter of location. It's located now in the overarching.
Right, right. And when this pandemic ends, we just, this policy ends. And then ECECA stand as recorded already. Okay with you Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. GCA is job descriptions. And according to the chart, again, this is the superintendent's domain, but he must inform the school committee. Superintendent may revise job descriptions. Considering provisions to collective bargaining in accord, in order to secure the safety and health of students and staff established blah, 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 blah. Any changes to job descriptions shall expire at the end of the declared emergency situation. The superintendent will inform the school committee of any such changes. Again, this gives the superintendent flexibility to make changes or introduce new job descriptions to deal with the pandemic. We good with that?
Yeah. Wait, let me just. Yeah.
The only thing I had questions about was that last line, any changes to job description shall expire at the end of the declared emergency situation. I guess that just means that if there's something you want to continue, you've got to bring it before the board at that point.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, school calendar file IC and ICA. And this is the one that has to come to school committee. So, subject to the guidance from Department of Ed. And the provisions of collective bargaining, the superintendent may suspend or revise the school calendar with the approval of the school committee. Okay?
Yeah, that's a. Doesn't look like there's any changes to that then.
Yeah, really, because don't change it to the calendar, come to the school committee anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's considered the school committee's calendar.
Yeah, so I think that's just real, really reiterating.
Yeah.
Authority in place. Okay, the next one is time on learning ICICA and ID. Which is the school day now. And this one is in the superintendent's domain. Subject to the guidance from Department of Ed and the provisions of collective bargaining. The superintendent may suspend or amend requirements for time on learning for the duration of the COVID pandemic. Just seems kind of funny because isn't that state regulated?
It is state regulated and there was just a reduction in time on learning due to the fact that there was 10 days less.
Right.
And we put it in our. We put it in our, our plan, so.
I guess, I guess.
Recommended. I mean, we're not gonna, we're always over anyway, so it's not. For, for us, it's never really a concern, even at 990, because we schedule like 1,050, something like that. So maybe for some places it's, I'm sure there's some places where it is an issue, but it's not here.
Yeah, well, I, I'm guessing that this then sort of protects you in terms of if something comes up and. You know, this town is in the red zone, for example, and you need to. Change something. We lose some learning days in transition or something that you could submit a waiver to the state, but you can go ahead and make changes. Um, as needed, if something comes up.
Yeah.
It can give you the authority anyway. Okay. The next one that has, that we need to deal with is grading and retention file IKE. And, um, this one is school committee in accordance with guidance from the Department of Ed, the superintendent may propose. And whenever it says may propose, it means to the school committee. Subject to the approval of the school committee modifications to the policy of the district for grading and retention of students. Again, this is just to be nimble during the pandemic period. Seem okay?
Yeah.
And then local graduation requirements IKF, which is again, school committee in accordance with Department of Ed. And modifications to current regulation or law, the superintendent may propose. Subject to the approval of the school committee modifications to the policy of the district regarding graduation requirements. Seem okay Jeff?
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Okay, so now I have something highlighted in this next section that, that's already gone before the school committee. I noticed in reviewing these. That the. Text in yellow at the bottom of the second paragraph was not included in the first read.
What, which policy?
It says discipline and suspension expulsion. It's the next item on the list after graduation requirements.
JIP and JK are the policies.
Yeah. It says further, the superintendent shall provide in these back to school plans provisions for students who are disciplined or suspended. The original MASC language also said, or who may elect to remain at home under learning. Under the provisions of the policies related to homeschooling or who may elect remote learning in the interest of safety or health concerns. And it seems to me the homeschooling reference doesn't belong there. Right? Because homeschooling, they're not part of the district.
I believe that was why during the last meeting you want, some, someone had mentioned to delete that second half that starts with or who may elect.
What about the last part? Or who may elect remote learning in the interest of safety or health concerns. Should not be in there?
Um, I don't know that. I just remember that.
Homeschooling conversation.
Yeah, it was.
I remember that.
We were told to, to end it at disciplined or suspended period.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture why someone who is. Learning remotely needs to be disciplined or suspended. I suppose maybe for a.
Online.
An online infraction, I suppose, I, I guess.
Yeah.
But I agree that the homeschooling that does not belong in there. It's, that whole section should be deleted and it should read or who may elect remote learning.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, you got that Christie?
Yeah, got it.
Well, why don't you make that in the final document? Cause we're going to present this document to the school committee next, and I think we should present it. In many ways, the way it is now, but light gray text showing what they've already read and the black text, which is new coming to them. So make sure that that addition is black or, yeah, is black, I guess. So they see that something's been added to what they've already read. Okay, so next one, a student absence and attendance. And now Christie has taken, she, she said, she looked at this, I know Christie looking went, oh, I missed a, one of these other policies. It needs to be combined for our regional district now. We still had these three separate policies. So this policy has a lot more redlining in it because she's combined. Uh, all these three school policies into one regional policy. So you'll see if we go, if we stop for a second and go over to the actual policy that's in the shared drive. JE. Is it here? Where is it? There it is. JEVF1. You'll see a lot more redlining where she's combined the policies. I didn't see any problems with those when I reviewed those. It looked like it all made sense. But what's not here is this language that's on my document. Uh, Christie, which says subject, oh, it's, it's not included here. It doesn't need to be included, but. What we're adding in, in EBC supplement is subject to operative law and regulations. The superintendent may suspend, modify or adapt policies related to student attendance. Including the link between attendance, absences and grades when appropriate, chronic absence policies and accommodations for students requiring special placements. That language Christie, okay, so let's just stay here for a second. Are the, are the combined, is the combined JE document? The regional JE document. Does that seem acceptable to you?
It's acceptable to me.
Yeah, it seems fine.
Okay, so Christie, we need to have that be another, a third policy to be approved as a standalone. So we have IHBHE, we have EBCFA version two. Oh, we have ACAB, the harassment. And we have this JE attendance. Regional. Okay. So then let's go back to the.
Thanks, thanks for uncovering that Christie, that we still had a regional policy missing.
Before we're done, we'll find another one somewhere. There, they seem to be lurking. The, um, so let's, um, go back to the long document EBC supplement. We're at the bottom of page four. Student absence and attendance. So Christie, this language. Is for, relates to files JE and JH. And we should take out that reference to JETBO and BE. Can you make that change to the document? Should just say file JE and JH.
Yeah, I'll make that change.
Okay, and then you'll see at the top of page five, it also says, in addition for JH. They're also saying the superintendent may propose protocols or modifications or suspensions, district policies regarding attendance. At, at, uh, school events. As opposed to just attendance at school. So again, both of those. Now wait a second now.
I'm not actually seeing that. Where the heck is that?
Uh, top of page five. It says in addition. For file JH and student athletic handbooks. Do you see that?
I see that.
And then it says, subject to law, regulation or emergency declaration.
Thank you. I see it. Thank you. I'm sorry. It took me a while.
The superintendent may propose, so that means to school committee. So in one case, making changes to attendance in school is in the superintendent's domain. But making changes to attendance at school events has to come before the school committee.
Yep.
That seem right to you Jeff?
That makes total sense.
Okay. Okay, the next one eligibility for participation in extracurricular activities, including sports file JJ. This one, it has to come before the school committee. The superintendent may propose to the school committee or approval changes to district protocols for participation in extracurricular activities. Including sports subject to the rules of MIAA. Which you've already done. Okay, so the next one JL exemptions for particular groups of students.
No, no, I'm wondering if we can just go back to that one for a second. Okay, so, all right, that's, we did touch, we did do that. I have a, I have an MOA for. Coaching and advisor stipends, but that, that's for Tuesday, but it's sort of related to this, so, but we did, we dealt with this one, okay.
Okay. Yeah, so the MOA. Why does that come before the school committee? I'm just trying to, any, does any memo like?
Yeah, because anything that's, because the contract is between the school committee and. the the association and not the superintendent, so any changes to the contract and a stipends contractual, you you vote on that. So the M O A essentially says, and we don't have it written yet. Russ is working on it now, but essentially says that the coaches will be paid and the extracurricular advisors will be paid their full stipend. However, if the the season is ended for some reason, then the the stipend will be prorated. And so I've already talked to the association about it and they're fine. It makes sense to them.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. Okay, so file J L exemptions for particular groups of students. This is your in your domain, Jeff. The superintendent shall provide protocols to principals and teachers regarding students who may require special exemptions. During the pandemic, such protocols may address exemption for utilizing support animals. Does that seem like? It belongs there, Jeff?
Um.
I don't know what the protocols would look like.
No, well, you know, I think this we cover try to cover as much as we could in the entry plan to deal with this. And so I'm reading through it to see if we've covered everything. I don't have it in front of me, but by protocol for offensive and teasing regarding students who may require. Stand in a pandemic emergency. I don't know what those protocols would be either really except that what's in the. You know, we're going through all these policies now. It seems like those cover.
Well, we might. We might say she'll provide protocols as needed beyond the back to school plan.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, like I said, we've tried to cover as much stuff in there, but as we go through it, we keep finding things.
Okay, Christie.
Okay.
Do you want, you know, question about all these policies that are related to COVID?
Yeah.
Do you want these as an addendum to the reentry plan? Cause you had a vote on that. So should do. Do you want these as an addendum or no? It's up to you. Is this something you want to vote on for the committee? Because if you we were going to put them, we were going to put them on our website because these are all policies that if if not, all the policies are there anyway, but we were going to pull these out and put them in the COVID nineteen section. But I was thinking if they could be, if we could take, you know, we agreed that the reentry plan is a working document. You could vote. You could take a vote to add those as as an addendum to the reentry plan and would have them as part of it. So when someone went to the reentry plan to get to the back, they could see the policies related to it's up to you. I mean, we don't have to have them in there, but it seems like that the M A S the M A S C went through trouble to modify these policies because of COVID nineteen.
Yeah. What do you think, Cliff?
Um, could you kind of highlight for me, Jeff, what the benefit of doing that is?
Just just.
Instead of putting them separately.
Just to make them easier for someone to access or a parent to access, I'm going to have a set of them for myself. Because I just so I know the ones that apply to me and along with this 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 grid. But um, there are parents. A lot of times they read the policies and sometimes it clears things up for them. And sometimes it causes them to have more questions, but either way. If they're there.
I mean, the alternative would be in my mind, it would be to post a link
Yeah.
under the back to school plan that's to E B C supplement.
Yeah.
And to the face mask policy. Those those are the, I think, the.
You want a link to specific ones then?
Well, it seems to be.
Do you have a link to all of the COVID related policies?
Well, I think that's it. E B C and face masks, isn't it? And and if we do any, I don't think there's a remote learning one.
Yeah, I I think a link is a better strategy and.
It just prevents us from having to revote that plan every time we make a change, I think.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah. But it should be, you know, the the link should be prominent in there and said, you know, if you want for information on the policies that are guiding this, like this link.
Yeah. Yeah. And then that within that link, there would be these separate policies. So I see remote learning, face masks and E B C supplement as the ones that would be there.
Yep.
Okay, so now we're down to students at risk J I E, J L and J L C. These are all in your domain, Jeff. During the COVID pandemic, the superintendent or principal of the school in consultation with P P S may revise or suspend provisions of policy to facilitate the education of students at risk or with special physical needs or their family caregivers, including but not limited to caring for educating students with disabilities, illness, pregnancy, blah, 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 special education needs consistent. Or special education needs consistent with law and regulations. So you in consultation with P P S can revise policies relating to students at risk.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Yep. Okay, so moving on to page six. Privacy of students. This is where I'm saying, Cliff, that it's just a restatement during the pandemic. The rights to privacy held by students and their families shall not be abridged. And then now the thing we have to be aware of here, Jeff, and I'm wondering how this is jiving with. You're thinking about remote learning or videoing from the classroom. Says Massachusetts law prohibits the recording of individuals without their permission. Similarly, students may not be recorded in classrooms by audio, visual or remote means without the permission of parents or if of age individual students. During periods of remote learning, the privacy of students participating in online classes shall not be violated by recording them without appropriate permissions.
Well, I talked to Russ about this because some of the teachers want this and some of them do not. And it seems to be the ones who the teachers. It seems to be at least the ones who who have these courses that are very concrete, you know, math, physics and the sequential courses. Seem to want these in classrooms and some don't think it's going to be beneficial. So I I talked to Russ about it and I talked to the association and they agreed that if a teacher does want that in the classroom, then they would agree to it. And so
Okay.
I talked to Russ and these these laws, they're they're actually all state wiretapping laws. They were the laws that they used to for the mafia originally, but they're still on the books and they and they're real. I mean, that, you know, you can get in trouble. You can get in trouble if you do this stuff. So he gave us a statement, a waiver that we will send home to all of the parents. And he said, just if you use this, send it home to the parents. So the laws basically say you can't listen in on on someone or you can't videotape them without them knowing it. That's the that's what it is. So it says that that some teachers may may opt for opt in for having audio and visual in the classroom, but at no time will the the camera be pointed at any anybody except the teacher. But student voices may be heard. Then the other thing you have to do to to, you know, to make this all legal is you have to post on the outside of the classroom that audio visual is taking place in the classroom. And he said, that's really all you need. So we're going to send home the waivers. And he says you should come home from the building. So the principals will send the waiver home and we'll make sure we have the the correct signage in the building. So everybody's aware of it. The other thing we have to do is make sure that that the last year we had a statement that we put up that said audio visuals taking place in the classroom. And it just as a what's the word I'm looking for? Just to let the parents know. So there's really kind of three layers you have to go through to make this all legal. And of course, you can opt out of it too. So.
I think it would be helpful then that you have that protocol in place so that we can see it. I mean, I I'm just I I'm in real estate. And one of the issues we're having is that people have security systems, ring doorbells and that sort of thing. So now when we sign a contract with someone to sell their home, we have this contract that we have this document they have to review, have to review with them. That they may not record, they may not use their ring doorbell system. That what goes on in their home during a showing is private because they don't have permission.
Yeah.
Because this is an area rife with litigation, apparently. Because of the lack of privacy due to the constant presence of recording devices in every part of our life.
You know, we'll do Christie, if you could take the statement, I know you're writing that, taking the the words that the statement that Russ gave us and you. So we'll send it to the principals, but maybe on Tuesday's meeting, we can put that as part of my agenda and I give the school committee the waiver statement.
Yeah. So Jeff, clarification. So it's a waiver from state law? Either from what?
It's a waiver from holding the school responsible. And it is a waiver from state law because the state law, the state law doesn't say you can't, you can't video someone. It says you can't video. It's not actually the video as much as it's the audio, because again, it's these wiretapping laws. The law that says that you can't do it without them knowing it. So once they know it, it's legal.
Well, there are also policies, and I think we have them somewhere, but I may I may be wrong about showing and identifying students visually. Like especially people have been very concerned with young children, right? Posting their image on the web and having their name with their image is not been.
Yeah, we send as as all do all districts, we send something home at the beginning of the year that says to parents that, you know, your your child might, their picture may be used during the year or there may be a picture that's taken in school. Because it happens, you know, I might go in and take a picture of something and I inadvertently get a student.
Right. So it happened here with video.
It's an opt out basically to say if you don't want your child to be in any videos or pictures or you don't agree, then just let us know. Other than that, most parents don't have an issue with it. But it's the same kind of thing. You've got to let them know that it might happen.
So it seems like those two things. Oh, I'm sorry, Cliff.
No. So paint a picture for me, Jeff. Let's say a teacher is willing to have that. And but the children's parents are giving have to. I'm the here, I'm willing to do it, but every kid in my classroom, we have to have a permission, right? Wrong? Just hit that one first.
Well, the statement goes home to parents that says it's going to happen. But if there's an issue, they have to come to the school and say, well, I don't want that to happen. Now, it won't be in every other classroom, but it won't be in every classroom. But if a teacher, if a parent doesn't want that, if they don't want the, they don't want their kid in a class like that, then we're going to have to work around it. We're going to have to, you know, separate that student or put them someplace where it's, you know, their voice may not be recorded. Now, here's the issue. It's probably not going to be. If you say, well, I don't, I don't want that in my son's class, for example. Your son's not going to be videoed. If your son doesn't say anything, nobody's going to hear your son's voice. But if a teacher asks a question and that student has to answer, then that student's voice is going to be heard. And I don't know why somebody wouldn't want that, but it's possible someone doesn't want that and we got to take that into consideration.
Oh, I I absolutely think you're going to get parents who are going to say no to that.
Yeah, and I I think that they you what you're asking for is not whether parents want this in their classroom. You're asking for permission for their child to be recorded visually or audit auditory. And if they say, no, I don't want my child recorded, then they can either be out of the classroom or they can be sat in a place and asked not to not to speak. The teacher doesn't call on that start on that student, for example.
Yeah.
And they're not in the visual field, visual field of the camera.
Well, they won't be videoed at all because the statement says that the camera will always be pointed at the teacher. Well, at no time be pointed at the students. But then there's a line in there that says, however, student voices may be heard during the during the presentation. So the teacher asks a question, something like that. Now, I don't know that a parent would object to.
A voice.
Yeah, the voice. And it would be like I asked a question, Jeff, could you answer that? And so Jeff gives it. Okay, so now it's my son's voice I just heard. You know, so I don't know if I don't know if anybody's going to be.
So this document is actually more of a hold harmless?
Yeah.
Because you can't undo the law. So it must be a hold harmless. You won't hold us responsible should something happen.
Well, it's not illegal to evidently, it's not illegal to video someone or to take or to 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 record their voice. It's illegal to do it and not tell them. So again, it's it goes back to these wiretapping laws where if if you're being recorded, this is being recorded. Right? So I know it's being recorded. So as long as I know it's being recorded, there's not an issue. If you're recording this and you don't tell anybody it's being recorded, that's the issue.
Well, and I think the other issue, Jeff, is that we're dealing with minors here.
That's the other problem. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're protecting students in this, not just protecting the district.
Can never abrogate a student's rights. Never, you know, if a parent says, oh, it's okay. Under the law, the child can still bring suit. I mean, not that they're going to.
Well, not the parent saying it's okay. It's us saying it's going to happen. And if you don't like that, then we can we'll make an arrangement for your child if your child's going to be in that class.
I guess it's the same thing that we do when we start our school committee meeting and we warn people or advise people is probably better word. We advise them that your image and voice may be recorded.
Exactly.
Well, see now, that's where I think it's more than that, Cliff, because we're adults, we're consenting adults. We can decide what come or go or whatever. But in this case, we're also protecting children from being exposed on broad internet, you know, sites and so on publicly in ways that may not be to their benefit. Maybe harmful. So it I think it's very important that we convey both these issues that we're we're informing people of what we're doing and we're protecting children appropriately. And they're both. And I think when you put these these permissions or waivers and I and I to me, they're they're different. A waiver is saying, okay. I won't hold you accountable or I will not, I'm going to be take exemption to this rule. Whereas permission is seeking their a agreement, which I feel like is a different posture. And I I think you should be very clear what you're seeking, a waiver or permission and maybe.
If I'm not mistaken, Christie, it says waiver on top of the thing that Russ gave us.
So that may have to do with the the district protecting the district, holding the harm, holding the district harmless. Permission may have to do with seeking permission to include a visual image or or audio recording in the work going on in the classroom. And you know, a parent may have very sound, all kinds of reasons for saying, I really don't want my child included in that. There can be custody issues, for example.
There it is.
Here's the notice.
Oh, thank you, Christie.
There could be custody issues. There could be special needs issues. All kinds of privacy issues that say why they don't want even an image that's accidental to occur or a recording of a child responding to a question that maybe the child might feel humiliated by or be harassed by later. Or, you know, there are all kinds of things that could happen that a parent might be or child might be sensitive to. So I think this issue of waiver versus permission and audio, visual, audio and visual. And you can say the camera's going to be pointed at the teacher, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to catch the backs of. And you can say the camera's gonna be pointed at the teacher, but that doesn't mean that it's not gonna catch the backs of students' heads, or the sides of students' heads. Or movement of a child across the visual field. I mean, there are still lots of things there that could be problematic.
So it's, it's, it's neither a waiver nor a, whatever the other word was, it's a notice. That they would, we're doing this, and your child may be heard or seen.
Christie, you gotta add Zoom to that too, okay? Forgot to tell you.
Feel like a notice, your child may be heard or seen, is, is not, does not sound protective to me. That concerns me.
And Russ wrote this, right? Okay.
Yeah, but he's coming from that, that sort of wiretapping place.
No, he took it from another district, this is from another district that he does, he works with, and he said this, this is a good.
Okay.
So this has been done before.
Yeah. I think at the least, this notice and or any protocols around this should be shared with school committee members. Because this could potentially be a conversation at the meeting.
Christie, do you have the other document, you know, the one that the, that the teachers read, that they, they, um, they, they had to read? In the, in the spring? We'll, we'll include that one too, you probably.
Yeah, I, I don't have it handy, but I can, I definitely have it in my file somewhere.
All right, so we'll, let's, 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 uh, let's include that one too.
Yep.
So what, where is the part, where, where's the opt out part?
Well, the opt out part, if they don't wanna do it, then they'll let us know, and, and, and we won't.
Well, that's gonna have to be stated clearly.
I think so.
That, yeah, that you're automatically opted in, everyone's opted in automatically. You must opt out if you don't want this.
Well, let's, before we get ahead of ourselves here, and make this a bit bigger thing than it really is, let's get both of the statements, and then we can.
Okay.
Because the other one came from Russ too, and I can't remember that one off the top of my head. And I forgot what the other one said, the other one had a, and that one, he said, would have to go in conjunction with this. And he wrote that one too, but I think that's where we had. I think that's where they said, you, 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 uh, that if you didn't wanna do it. You could opt out.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I'm not seeing this, so this, this language in our EBC, Massachusetts State Law, our EBC, page six here. Massachusetts law prohibits the recording of individuals without their permission. And notice is not getting permission.
A notice is not getting permission, that's right.
Similarly, students may not be recorded in classrooms by audio, visual, or remote means without the permission of parents or students if of age.
Russ could be going on case law. But there've probably been cases which have refined the understanding of the law.
Here's the statement that the teachers read before the meeting.
Yes, one of the teachers sent this to me.
Yes, I, I just sent that to you, Christie.
Thank you. I'm sure you know it by heart by now.
Oh, I got it down to under thirty seconds, saying it on one breath.
Yeah, and then, Christie, there's another notice that gets sent home at the beginning of the year, that principals sent home. We send it home to parents.
Yep, you want that included in your packet too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give them all of it. These are all of the, I think, uh, this is everything that we have.
Okay.
It has to do with privacy, recording files on, let's say, and usually, obviously, we don't have these other two things. These are good to have, though, you know why? Because I, I don't see, I, I think there's a spot for, I think down the line. You know, one of the things the commissioner talked about was, um, he had done away with the, the remote learning during for weather conditions, so-called blizzard bags. And part of the reason was an equity issue, because not a lot of, not a lot of people were good at, at it at that time. But we've done so much with it now that they're actually reconsidering it. They, they're reconsidering having these alternative learning days. So I can see down the road where we're, we're gonna need these. So we probably should have, we probably should make sure we all agree on them.
Yeah, so, so these documents are gonna go in your part of the school committee meeting, right, Jeff?
Yes, they will.
Okay, and so how will you attend to this permission piece?
That notice?
No, not notice, Mass law prohibits the recording of individuals without their permission. Without the permission of parents. At the reading from the EBC document. Page six.
Well, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that the thing they send at the beginning of the year. If I'm not mistaken, that has a sign off on it.
For, for images, right?
Uh, I think it says both.
Okay, you might, you might check that and include that in your packet.
Well, we are, we're gonna have three.
And you know, maybe, uh, parents who are on the school committee will recall that, but there's a couple of us at least who aren't parents. And so we don't see what the parents get. So I think that that's.
Right. Yep, okay, so that would be good to go over that, then by the time we get to this policy, it will already be addressed. All right, so privacy of students, I think we've got covered, I think this language seems appropriate as long as you're tending to permission. Okay, well, we've got privacy covered. So visitors in school, KI. This is.
But, you know, we don't need permission to do it, we just gotta give them a chance to opt out of it, we don't need.
It says Massachusetts law prohibits the recording of individuals without their permission.
Well, permission, that means you tell them you're doing it, that's, without, that's the law, the law says you, Russ told me, you, you can't record someone without them knowing it. So if you, if you record some, if you're recording somebody and they know it.
Oh, that, that's not what this language says, so, and this is from MASC. So somewhere here, we've got a little bit of a conflict. It says.
The issue is.
Recorded by audio, visual. Permission.
Once we tell them, then they have the chance to opt out of it.
Well, then you need a statement in there that says you have the opportunity to opt out. And that, if you do not opt out, that constitutes permission to record.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I agree with that, sure, that makes sense.
It has to be all very explicit, I think.
I would agree with you, Susan.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right.
Okay, moving on then to KI, visitors to schools, this is in this school committee's domain. Subject to current emergency declarations, the superintendent may propose suspension or modification to district policies regarding visitors to school buildings during the school day and after school hours. That seems appropriate to me.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, so pivoting back to remote learning or back to in-school instruction. Christie had put this into policy JRA, but it doesn't matter, it's just gonna stand here as a bullet. The superintendent may, shall incorporate into back-to-school plan protocols for modifying these plans. Including addressing the needs of students who may require reversion from in-school to remote learning modalities because of the pandemic. So this is about protocols, superintendent has to lay out in the back-to-school plan how, how things are going to work when you're switching from one mode to the other. And I don't know if you've done that or not, Jeff.
Where, where are you looking, Susan?
Page six, the second to the last bullet.
It sounds like it's specifically referencing students who are moving from in-school to remote. Not necessarily the other way around.
Yeah, I wonder if they mean, just, just, I mean, it specifically says it in-school to remote.
But the heading, it says pivoting back to, oh, pivoting back to remote learning or back to in-school.
Oh, I see that, yeah. Although the language.
I thought that was in the, I thought that was in the V entry plan.
I, I think, I think it says, protocols for modifying these plans. Including addressing the needs of students from the career shifting, so I don't know, again, I don't know what the protocols would be unless it's about the metrics you're gonna use to make the decisions. Or, you know, how the change is made that, you know, families are notified and the next day it happens. You know, I think it's, it's about how does this change happen? And I'm not sure that's fully specified there in the back-to-school plan. Protocols for modifying the back-to-school plans.
For individual students. Or groups of students, right?
Or including addressing the needs of students who may require special. Yeah, it doesn't say groups of students per se, but I think it's about.
Let's, I don't understand this modifying the plans, including addressing the needs. Who may require.
I don't know what this, I don't know. I'm not quite sure.
I think it, I, I think the intention here is that there's something in the back-to-school plans that, that, that explains how pivoting is gonna happen.
But this says for student, addressing the needs of students who may require.
Including.
This doesn't say, yeah.
You know, you may have it in the plan, but it may be submerged in something else and not, not a standout. Like topic under pivoting.
Yeah.
And it, it is an important thing for people to understand, when, when these changes are gonna happen. People are gonna wanna know, like, how, how is this working? How, you know, what's, what's the timeframe on this, who is it that makes this call? What happens? You know, how, how do we make that shift and then back again? You may, I don't know, how do you wanna handle that?
I don't know. Let me look through the plan.
Yeah, I think you probably, you know, I think it may be embedded in the plan somewhere, you just don't know it.
You know, you might be able to put in a heading or something, and that would clarify, look here, pivoting.
Yeah. All right.
Is it okay to leave this language in here, Jeff, the way it is?
Yeah, I'll look into this.
Okay. And then, uh, the last piece is, uh, the public safety officers. School resource officers, subject to current law regulation, the superintendent shall report to the school committee of any change in status of the school resource officer. And then it says, if the district eliminates visitors to school during the school day, the SRO may be impacted, so I didn't even know. I mean, I, just saying, obviously, the parenthetical, I think, is to, to the reader, not, that wouldn't be in the policy, I don't think. I think all it needs to say is, subject to current law regulation, the superintendent should report to the school committee any change in the status of the school resource officer.
Yeah, I would agree, I don't think that second, I don't think the parenthetical statement needs to be there.
Well, we don't have an MOA for a student, for, oh, we do, actually, it's one of our, it's one of our policies.
Yeah, we have an, that's a row, right?
No, we still have that on the books, we never got rid of it.
Yeah, so I think that, is this okay if we just take off the parenthetical at the end and just say you'll tell us of any changes to the SRO?
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Okay, Christie, let's take off that parenthetical piece.
We even have that.
Okay, I think that's everything in this, in this EBC supplement. So if we make those final changes, we should be able to upload this, and I should be able to explain to the school committee the gray text versus the black text. And my, my feeling is that even though this is a second read. Next school committee meeting is a second read on the gray text, we shouldn't bother voting on this until the following meeting. When we disvote the entire policy. Makes sense to kind of vote half of it. And then the other half, I don't think, other than to get it in motion faster, I guess, but.
So what's the reason for not voting on it? Just kind of clarify that for me.
The, well, these, these parts that we just discussed today, the black text, will be their first read.
Oh, understood, okay.
So I think we can't vote on the whole policy. Comes to a second read.
Got it.
That means that, I don't know what Jim is planning for September meetings. If, I mean, because my concern is that this policy should be on the books as soon as possible. I hate to wait till October, I'm hoping maybe there's a second September meeting, and we could get this approved in September. Otherwise, it has to wait till October. So we're okay with that going forward?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yep.
So what I see here is we have four policy, one, two, three, four, five policies going forward to this next meeting, Christie. IHBHE, remote learning. EBCFA, version two, face masks, face coverings. ACAB, harassment, section three, filled in. EBC supplement. As written with the gray and the black text, one, two, three, four, and JE attendance.
Yes, that's what I have, five policies.
Okay. And we don't have anything, oh, and then, yeah, so we don't have anything carried over from before, we don't have any old policies that are waiting for school committee attention, right?
I don't believe so.
So I think what I would like to do, Christie, with this EBC, is to update that page seven, the grid. So that it shows all the policies referenced in this. This current grid we have is just referencing the ones we were discussing today. So I'd like to, I, I've hidden some of the rows and stuff, so I'd like to open that up and get the whole all policies referenced showing in the grid, so people can see a snapshot view.
Okay, sure, just, um, send it to me, I'm happy to put it in the drive.
Okay, actually, it's already in, I've already got it, it's a document shared with you online.
Oh, okay.
Policy, it's called, let's see what it's called, pandemic policy revisions, and I changed the date to oh nine, oh eight, twenty. And I just need to open up the rows and cross-check to make sure I've got the, them accurate. And then, that then has to be copied and pasted, I don't know if it'll, I don't think it'll all fit on one page. So it will need to have.
Just has to be landscape, right?
It, it is landscape, yep, but I think it will need, because it's gonna run across a couple pages, Christie, it will need that header row, rows one and two included on both pages.
Okay.
So that we know what the columns stand for. Okay, so I'll work on that and let you know when that's ready.
Okay.
Okay, now, so everything that we have on the agenda, where's the agenda?
I just wanted to say that our N ninety fives.
Yeah.
They have the vents on the front.
Yours do, the ones you ordered.
Correct.
That's, if that's proper.
Again, I think when we ordered them, we didn't realize that, that N ninety fives didn't have.
I wonder if you, well, I wanna check with, who, who, who would know more about these snap masks?
But I know what that vents for, I mean, that, that's, if that's the, if that's the law, that, those vents clearly if to exhale through.
Except I think they have filters or something, don't they? So I, I.
I can't remember if you can see the, if you can see the, the vent from the inside. If there's a filter for us, I can't, you know, I use them all the time, but I, huh.
So do you want me to contact our town board of health or anything to sort of get another opinion about these masks?
Yeah, we'll do that.
You, you want me to do that or are you going to do that?
No, I'll check into them. Because I think we're not realizing that. I, first of all, I didn't know there were, there were more than one kind. And two, I didn't know that there were, that you could not have that.
Well, I, I will resend, um, let me just make a note here. I'll find the language that I got that from. So you have that to reference to.
Okay.
Exhalation mask, and I'll send that to you. I'll do that day. To Jeff and Christie for in reference to the N95.
Yeah, I'm surprised about this because I know that the recommendation that they, of, of the N95s is supposed to be, does the N95s that it?
Higher order.
Then the KN95s, they're, they're, they're very good. But there's a big price difference in them too. So we went with the KN, KN95s. The nurses said we could use these. But we did order a few of the N95s and I, and I didn't, I don't remember seeing, I'll have to ask Bob Steve. I don't remember seeing anything in there that said you can auto, you can only order these kind of N95s.
Yeah.
You know, I'm surprised at this. Okay, we'll look into it.
Another thing you might, you might send a note out to MASs or, or MASc listservs? Just to see if people have differentiated these in any way and how that relate. I don't know if people might have some input on this. It's another resource. Um, but I, I, okay, I'll, I will then find the article that references this and send that to you today. And then you will find out more about it. And then, um, why don't you make the appropriate change to that face covering line? If it needs to be changed, it's on the face coverings policy, page one.
Did that, um, did the reference you had on there, it said the N95s without it, was that from the state or was it just an article you read?
Um, no, I, I'm trying to remember. I have to go back and find it. And it didn't say N95s. It just said masks with one-way or exhalation vents.
Okay.
But I, I have to go back and find which reference it was. That's what I'm going to let you know.
All right.
Okay. Um, so I think that's everything on our agenda. Now, the I don't know, and Chrissy, you can help me here, um, do we have other policies sitting in the wings that we are needing to attend to? Or Jeff, do you know of any that are coming up that we're going to need another meeting for right away?
I don't know. I don't have to talk to my head, no.
No, I have to look back at, um, when we, when we broke for COVID in March, I have to look back and, and see what we have.
So what's the technology policy updates?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah. So if we, thanks, thanks, Cliff. If you go to the our shared drive. There's the top, there, there are four, four technology policies, all starting with IJN. And they have initials on them. Uh, so the first two have input from Karen, Carol, and Paul. And the bottom two, Paul didn't, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't say quite, it depends how they're sorting on your screen, but two of them have all three input. The other two have just Karen and Carol because Paul didn't, he reviewed them, but didn't have any changes he was suggesting.
Okay.
Um, so if we look at IJ, let's see, if we do these in order, it will be IJND.
Okay.
B1. Just opening that up on my screen. And so I, they, hi, two of, to Carol and Karen both highlighted this messaging SP applications, and I don't know why, safety and security of minors when they are using email instant messaging applications. Is that, is that texting? Is that, uh, I, it seemed to be some question about that phrasing, and I don't know why.
I, I don't know. I don't even know what that is.
Instant messaging, SP.
The SP is, oh, maybe safety protocol?
Oh. Yeah, I don't know. So that part, I don't know what that is. And I'm, instant messaging, I assuming is texting. And I, I wonder if that language should just be updated to texting. There are instant messaging or texting applications. Yeah, I don't know what that is. Um, I don't, we have to get more input, I guess, there. It doesn't seem to be, it wasn't a huge red flag, but it, it was, maybe we can leave it there for right now. The, the main thing here was Paul asking, and I had asked this question also when I read this. Empowered digital use form, this references, and Paul asks, is this our acceptable use policy? If not, where is this form? The, these documents refer, I think they reference both an acceptable use policy and an empowered digital use form. And, and I, I didn't know what that was either. So, um.
Paul didn't know what it was?
No, he, he said, is this our acceptable use policy? Or is it something different? Because he, he was not familiar with it. So this piece needs to be addressed internally. May, I, I think, Christie, maybe this policy should be on our next agenda. Uh, because it seems there's some more research that has to be done here.
I'll carry that over. I'm trying to look up an empowered digital use form.
Yeah.
But I, um. I, I, I found one from New Bedford that I could use as an example.
Just, Chris, if you could just send it to Paul to ask him to compare it to our acceptable use policy to see if, what the difference is.
Okay.
Yeah, because you don't want more forms than you need.
No.
Uh, okay, so that was the main thing with this IJND. So let's keep that on the table for the next meeting and we'll get more information from Paul about that. So if we go down to the next one, it's IJNDB. This is the accept, acceptable use policy.
Right.
Carol's pointing out that references to Brolin Boils in public schools need to be updated, I believe, in these. So that's one change that should be made. And then, um, she said, I'm wondering if expectations for acceptable etiquette during remote learning should be included. I, I, I'm suggesting that we add, refer to district guidelines for acceptable etiquette during remote learning here. It seems like we, we shouldn't get into the, the etiquette itself is, is procedural. So I think we should just reference that there are procedures about acceptable etiquette. But that's my opinion. What do you think?
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, that's certainly being a policy.
I'm not sure where that should be put up. Chrissy, can you find a, a place to insert that? I'm not sure. I, I don't want it to be lost at the very end, but somewhere up in the front paragraphs, seems like we should have that tacked in, refer to district guidelines for acceptable etiquette during remote learning.
Okay, I'll see where I can fit it.
Seems like it could also go under the heading acceptable use. Maybe that's an easy place to put it. And then, um, on page three of this policy, at the top, there you'll see in, it's highlighted, never reveal your personal address, full legal name, phone number, social security number, et cetera. And that was flagged, and I'm not exactly sure why, except that maybe students will need to include their full names when they're submitting their work and stuff online. So maybe their full legal name needs to come out.
Yeah, I would think that needs to come out. They would have to, they would have.
It's more all the private information around.
Did Paul make that change on there? Do you know? Did he, he was either one?
Uh, I don't believe that was Paul. I think that was Carol or Karen. Yeah, Paul, Paul didn't have any comments on this document.
I would, uh, you know what, before we take that out, can we, can we check? Why they wouldn't.
With Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that would know if.
So this, this would be another document to forward to Chris, to Paul, then Christie, um, for his feedback.
Because I don't even know why it's flagged. Does it mean it shouldn't be there? It should be there? It should be expanded?
Yeah, that was, so that you'd have to get input from Carol or Karen on, because they were the ones who flagged it. Um, I'm just looking, the district guidelines for acceptable etiquette during remote learning.
It just sounds like there have been some comments, but these aren't clear at all.
Yeah, why? The why behind them. So let's give a little more information now that we've kind of, this is, this document reflects their combined flags and comments. So it's a good time to go back and say, okay, is there an issue here?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's go on to IJNDC. Internet publication. So there are a little few more here. Carol had some editorial pieces that she put in. Uh, this person should be referred to as the webmaster and, and refers ahead to section four. This one was flagged by a couple of people in the middle. Staff members may not publish a link to personal webpages as part of the school district website. Two people, one person, Karen or Carol, I forgot who said that PE, for instance, uses an outside website. And Paul says, we have allowed this, we have allowed people to link to. Uh, and I was saying, we encouraged at one point. The thing is, I think that, I think this sounds appropriate to me because it says personal webpages. So that would be like linking students to my personal Facebook page, for example, as opposed to an external webpage. I think those are different. The PE example is an example of linking to an external website.
Yeah, I know we have allowed that.
But not a personal webpage. This says staff members may not publish or link to personal webpages. And I think that's appropriate. You don't want them linking to personal.
Yeah, I do too. I think.
Principle, we're responsible for everyone who works in our district. I mean, we're, they represent the district.
Right.
That's, that's an important issue.
So the, so what are you saying about this line then, Cliff? That it's appropriate or not appropriate? Staff members may not publish a link to personal webpages.
I think absolutely.
Okay, so that should stay there. So I think this, this person, I think both these people have misread this to thinking that this is referring to external webpages.
Do we offer our teachers webpage opportunities through the district website?
Yeah, with some of them in the past, um, have used, they've used, they've linked to outside websites. But I think it was because, I think it was because of the what, I think it was because of the website we use. I, so part of the, so part of the thing that was going to happen this year is we were going to move to a different. We're going to move to a different website this year. We were doing that work. And then COVID came, came along, so we, we weren't, we, so we kind of put it on hold. We were going to go with a different provider. The reason why it was done in this case, I'm told at least, that that, that they, the current provider didn't really allow for a, um, didn't really allow teachers to, um, do what they needed to do in terms of, um, using our website. So.
So if someone uses their own website, a teacher X uses a, has an outside website, it's school-based material, et cetera, et cetera, who monitors that?
I don't know who monitors it. I don't think anybody monitors it. The issue is, the issue is that my understanding of the issue is that when you, when you currently, if you're on our website and you go to one of those outside websites, you, there's no way to get back. And that's the issue. So you, it seems like you're someplace else. As opposed to the website is sort of incorporated into our website so that you can kind of link back to us.
And then the student is unprotected, basically, from there on.
So that's, that's what I'm told. So when we start looking at different vendors, there are vendors who can actually, you can, you can, the one we were looking at, you could link, you could link to an outside website, but you could get back to us. It would look like it's still part of our website. So, um, I don't know the answer to this one. I, I do think it's, I, I don't think staff should be linking to personal websites.
Yeah, no, I don't either. And so the question now that's been raised is whether and how they can link to external websites.
Yeah, well, we, we're working on that, but we won't be able to get to that for a while.
Yeah, I certainly would not want to be responsible for kids getting off our website and navigating a website somewhere else.
Yeah.
That seems fraught with potential problems.
Yeah, and I don't know all the details of it. I just, I just know that, uh, it, it can be done differently now.
Okay.
Um, so how do we want to, do we want to hold this until we can get more conversation or at the next meeting? Can we get more conversation about linking to external pages?
Yeah, I think these are issues, absolutely.
Well, I think it should just be kept as it is, that they may not publish a link to personal webpages. I mean, they're going to link to, they have links to outside resources. I think it's just the issue may be the way our site is formatted right now, that they go off to those other, those outside websites that you can't really get back. And so maybe it was even a problem with how they, how these, uh, how inefficient our website was to navigate. So I know I've had parents who've told me, have told me the same thing. I go on your website and then all of a sudden I'm gone.
Yeah.
I'm someplace out. So, and I don't know if that's what this is addressing here. It seems like.
It isn't. I think it's only been raised in the comments, uh, when people, I think, confused the reference to personal webpages to external webpages. So now the issue's raised. What do we do about external? So I, I think we agree, this, this comment about not publishing or linking to personal webpages is appropriate and should stand. The question that's now raised is how, whether the district allows teachers to link to external websites.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with that. I mean, I don't think there's a problem with.
Oh, but you're just saying that people go out and they can't get back. They don't know where they are. Kids don't.
That's a function of, that's a function of, you know, all of a sudden you're, you're someplace else and you don't, you can't get back to the place you've been. So that's just a formatting issue. But I think, you know, I think they should be allowed to, to link to outside resources.
Yeah.
I think they do it. I, I don't think you can, I, I think it's, I think it takes away a lot of the usefulness of, of a teacher's.
No, you're right, to limit.
If, if a parent can't go and then go out to a resource that the teacher thinks is valuable for that parent. So I just.
So, so what we're going to do here, Christie, is take out this, uh, reference here to. So so what we're going to do here, Christie, is take out this reference here, too. I think this needs to be clarified. P E, we have allowed it and encouraged it at one point. We'll just take that language out.
Okay.
Which in this paragraph stands, staff members may not publish or link to personal webpages. And then up above, we're putting in parentheses. Access to digital business policy file I J N D. And this person shall be referred to as the webmaster. And then the paragraph below, we're adding in the red text in section four. So just editorial. Now, the top of the next page on this document. Now, this is has to again get back to. Safety and student privacy. Student photographs and student photographs may be published only with the written consent of the student's parent or guardian. And the question was, and again, this to me, I think this needs to be expanded beyond photographs because we have video and audio. That should be mentioned here. This heading. So the question here, what that comment was, is this consent specific to that picture or general release?
Well, at the beginning of the year, they said they sign a general release. But they sign it every year.
Okay. So then I think we should we should say we should expand this to say student photographs, video and audio. And it it should say up only with the written consent of the student's parent or guardian as provided in a general release. At the start of the school year. Something like that.
That sounds pretty good, actually.
So we should make sure we're okay with everything here because all these safety precautions are. They can't conflict with our other privacy statements. So A says in general, identifying information about students such as first and last names. Personal phone numbers or home addresses will not be published. Well, first names are published, aren't they?
We don't. No, we don't publish any of that stuff.
You don't publish any first names even?
No, we redact all of that.
Okay, all right, student photographs, video and audio. And then student work, student work, voice likeness, quotes, written material, music pieces, graphic or other may be published only with the written consent of the student's parent or guardian. And is this again a gen part of the general release or is this a specific?
Then you want to be again?
See, student work. And but it's the same question, you know, when you're saying only with written consent, does that mean?
I'll have to look at that release again, the one we we use at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I think we need to make sure that release form is. If we're going to use that as the consent. Then. We should just refer to it consistently here, and it should cover photographs, audio, visual and student work.
And yeah, student production.
Yeah.
Anything students produce.
Yeah. And then staff photographs accompanied by the staff members full name may be published only with the staff members' written consent. Staff work. Maybe publish only with the staff members. Yeah. So I think this this reference to written consent, we've just got to be very clear. What are we talking about here? Is this an item by item or is it one general release at the start of the year by everybody, staff and students? And this is going to be particularly important to get settled sooner rather than later because of because of the remote learning situation and the hybrid learning. And and you know, just the community extra communications and everything going out right now. Like you, you want to be able to send parents. Or photos of class activities and so on going on. And even posting on the website because people need more information than usual right now. All right, so this will come back. There's some follow up work on that that will come back to the meeting. And then the last one is I J N D D, which is social networking. And there's only one. To a couple of little comments on this one. On page two. District employees should not connect with currently enrolled students as a friend or contact using a personal social media account. That's consistent with what we just talked about. However, a teacher and or classroom account for the purpose of education is acceptable. And then inserting using the teacher's district email. There should be an apostrophe there. So they can connect with students. For the purposes of education using the district site. Okay, that seems reasonable, right?
Yep.
Okay, the next page three. This was highlighted. I don't know why staff members shall only contact students via their personal cell phones for specific purposes like field trip. The B B P S. Again, these policies all have to be updated, Christie, for Berlin Boils and Regional School District. Prefers communication related to academic issue occur in class or be directed through direct district provided email addresses. So I think the person's highlighting this because it shouldn't be a preference. It should be that's the expectation, I think. Maybe it's expects. The district expects communication related to academic issues, plural. Occur in class or be directed through district provided email addresses.
We have had some problems with this before.
Oh, yeah.
About inappropriate communication between staff and students.
Do you see anything else here that should be get more attention?
Well, I'm running at a little bit of a disadvantage. I can't find these documents.
Oh. Sorry.
That doesn't mean they weren't sent to me. I just can't find them in the hot fudge of Google Docs.
They should be in the shared drive for the policy subcommittee.
Well.
If you type in packets in the search drive in the search bar.
That's one. Search I haven't tried packets.
And then one of the packets that comes up should be policy subcommittee.
Yep, there it is.
And then you can go to the August eight, September eighth folder.
I'm sorry, I just could not find it.
Oh, I know. I've been there.
Every word I put in didn't work.
And then and in the policy subfolder, there should for September eighth, there there are the four I J N D. Policies and we're looking at I J N D D. Okay, social networking. Did you find it?
Yeah, I've seen it. It's a lot of reading. I'm not going to be able to.
No, you should be able to scan the at least the highlighted, the yellow highlight.
Yeah, I see like under seven C, something about full legal name.
Wait, are you an I J N D D?
Oh, D D. I went to D D, sorry. My apologies.
Okay.
I'm getting a message. Can't preview file. There's a problem loading.
Might have to reload, refresh your page, maybe.
Just having one of those days.
So I think most of these. Maybe Jeff, you could just bring these to. I don't know. You have to decide about your meeting time, but maybe a leader a leadership meeting to just. A few of these things and bring back clarifications. To the next policy meeting. Anything that's highlighted.
On the.
On these four technology policies.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Next leadership, which I don't know when it's going to be, but can you just put it on the running agenda?
Sure, I will do.
Thank you.
The sometimes there are just edits stuck in here, which don't require any this any discussion. But sometimes there's just a highlighted word or something, and we don't really know what the issue is. My guess is that on. Five B. Prefers should probably be expects. But you you can tell us about that. So let's bring those four back to the next meeting, and I'm I'm going to suggest that we set a policy subcommittee meeting for October. Unless. Unless the school committee says they want, they have a question about something we're bringing to them at this next meeting, and they need something revised on this. These whatever five policies that we're bringing to them. I want to make sure those get done and wrapped up. So if they if there's any issue and they send it back to committee, then we'll schedule another September meeting. But why don't we schedule? Then are. Assuming that there are no issues, let's schedule a meeting for October. Can we do that?
Fine with me.
So let's see, when is the October meeting?
October meeting is the 13th.
13th, so. How about October 6th, Tuesday, the 6th?
I'm available.
Jeff available sometime that day, Christie?
Yes, he is.
Okay, you you what time would you suggest?
That is usually the day you meet with the chair, correct, Jeff?
Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, so let's if we could do it at the same time, I think that'll be good 11.
Okay.
11 o'clock on October 6th. And. So Christie, I think, you know. Unless another slew of policies comes in and we have a, you know, things that we haven't finished with E B C or something like that. I would think that you could be free and clear, and we could maintain the minutes from there on.
Okay.
Okay. Keeping my fingers crossed. I see M A S E doesn't unload a whole bunch more, but.
Well. As the potential secretary, I would agree with that sense.
I I mean, I think right now, if if we can get these policies we discussed today. Forward in the school committee that we're in good shape.
Okay.
All right, thank you all for spending a chunk of time today to kind of move this forward so we can. Have updated policies in line with the implemented back to school plan, so that's good.
Thank you for joining us, Audrey.
It was my pleasure. I didn't even know what this was about, but I figured I'd join and see what's going on.
I think you're the first staff member who's joined up.
Well, you know, I I've seen, you know, what comes out of it. And if if I could add any input, then, you know, here I am.
Well, you did. You sent that a document. We were talking until you came around, so.
Do you have any questions for us or anything that we can ask for input at the end of the meeting here?
Um, I I don't. I think it makes sense what you what you're doing. Once I kind of caught on to what you were doing.
Yeah, you probably didn't have the benefit of having all the documents right in front of you in the shared drive.
That's correct. Well, I have the the existing document, not the ones that you have made changes or proposed changes to. The fall enough along with the the general gist of everything.
Good, joining us.
Thanks for joining us.
All right, I think we're good. We have the next meeting planned. We have things clarified that's going to school committee next. And the next and the things that need clarification that are coming back to the next policy subcommittee meeting around technology use. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll see you at the school committee meeting next.